All right, so let's go ahead and call the meeting to order, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Lawson?
Here.
Councilmembers Abbott?
Here.
Vanderwell?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Dare?
Here.
City Attorney Adams? You're muted, sir.
Here.
City Manager Krutz?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dare, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, public comment. Madam Clerk, I'm sure you have something to read.
Hi, I do, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon and thank you for joining us. Due to the social distancing requirements enacted in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Spark City Council meetings will be hosted in this virtual setting until further notice. The safety of Sparks residents, employees, and elected officials are important to us, and we appreciate your patience as we journey through this virtual meeting together. The City of Sparks uses Zoom, a third-party app for its virtual meetings, and does not control its technical specifications or requirements. Your ability to participate in public comment during this meeting may be impacted by factors like the type of device that you use, the strength of your internet or cellular signal, and the company that provides your internet or cellular service. The City of Sparks is not responsible if you are not able to participate in a meeting through Zoom due to these or any other factors. For those watching and listening from home, general public comment will be announced for Items 4 and 12.1. If you wish to speak during general public comment, you will need to call in using the phone number or join via the meeting link provided on the City Council agenda. Public comment will not be permitted on social media outlets. All participants will be muted upon entry to the meeting. If you would like to speak during public comment items, press *9 from your telephone or raise your hand on your computer or tablet when prompted. You will be called upon to speak one at a time by the name or the telephone number you are calling from. Please be listening for the clerk to read off your name or telephone number. No video callers will be admitted to the meeting. When you are called on to speak for public comment, state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will have three minutes. Please remember, any comments or questions cannot be addressed or answered by the council if the topics have not been agendized. Any person who disrupts the meeting to the extent that it is disorderly conduct will be removed from the meeting. And at this time, if anybody has any public comment, please press *9 from your telephone or raise your hand via your Zoom app to speak. It looks like I do have one from telephone number 775-843-1810. You may begin speaking. Please unmute yourself and state your name for the record.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes. Are you, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so should I talk? Start at my time?
Right, please state your name for the record and your time will begin now.
Sure, my name is Mohamed Safar.
Please continue.
Good, sir.
Yes, this is Mohamed Safar speaking. Basically, I talked to the city manager, I described and explained on September, I believe, 7, pretty much everything I'm supposed to say, but right now, I can say that I believe I've been harassed and discriminated against me for a long time. And they come to my side job, where I work with the people home, I have addresses, everything too, you can go to, ask them to every one of them. And they lie about me, they say these guys do, you know, bad stuff, illegal, you know, stealing people's stuff, and then basically harass my business and then my, basically people I work, you know, and bring a very uncomfortable situation. And this is happening for a long time, and this is, I believe, the neighborhood watch, they did the stuff, and of course, they get their support from the police, and otherwise, they wouldn't do that. So, and at this time, I will let, uh, this harassment to be stopped, this discrimination and need to be stopped. And the most important of this harassment is the bothering of my customers, telling them lies about me in the hope they won't hire me or for future businesses. So that's negative stuff against me, which is all right, I haven't done anything wrong or anything, you know, any trouble. So messing with my business and, and my customer and, and even my employees, and that's not right at all, that's being more confrontation and hate and and division between people, and that's not, that's not doing at all. So that's why I tried to explain it to several people, one of them was city manager, another one joined the city, and, and, and this is going on for a long time, I have so many license plate numbers, and people in my neighborhood, they, one day, they all, they kill me, this is an organized movement against me, and that's, I believe, happened by neighborhood watch, because they're very organized, they know what they're doing, they tell the people. For example, one day, all of them, they come into the dry bay and watch me, and they say, bring all the people to look at me, to let them say, this guy's a bad guy, watch this guy. And then another week, they come and say, okay, they've had him now. I mean, it's just different messages they send, and that's kind of a mafia, it's not a kind of mafia, it's a mafia, basically. So on, uh, make sure that video we had, yes.
Will you wrap it up? Your time is up.
Time's up, so basically, I want to be, you know, the, these stuff, stop, and then just not to harass myself and my businesses, and I haven't done anything wrong, and then, and like I said, I want to be the stop, because that's not healthy for community and for people and lies and deception, and this stuff is not right at all. This is, this is my, this is my belief. Thank you very much for giving me your time, I know it's past maybe three minutes, sorry about that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any other public comment?
I am not showing any other phone-in participants, however, I do have an email public comment. Dear Spark City Council, when San Antonio regulates its six puppy-selling pet stores to not sell animals from puppy mills, it will be the 417th jurisdiction to do so. Puppy Mill Free Reno Sparks Washoe and our vast constituency is looking forward to Sparks becoming the 417th city to do the humane thing by ending reprehensible animal cruelty and consumer fraud, as witnessed by the local puppy store's rating of F by the Better Business Bureau. Article, San Antonio Pet Stores May Soon Be Prohibited From Selling Dogs and Cats Provided By Breeders. If San Antonio pet stores want to sell dogs and cats, they only would be allowed to provide animals from animal control agencies or rescue organizations. Members of the council's Community Health and Equity Committee recently approved the changes, requiring that all pet shops within city limits get their cats and dogs from an animal rescue organization, an animal control agency, or a county animal shelter. I think we're on the right track, said District 7 Councilwoman Anna Sandoval, who chairs the committee. They're going to put us on a path to be a more humane community when it comes to pet welfare. Several pet stores in the San Antonio area already provide only rescue cats and dogs to the public, often working with local animal groups to bring them out of, out to the stores on weekends and for special events. The changes would affect about a half dozen pet shops in town and could stop the flow of puppy mill animals. Puppy mill organizations are inhumane, Lefgren said. Lefgren said these changes won't affect small breeders. What this does is, in addition to protecting the pets, it sets the standards going forward as for what we want our city to be. Animal Care Services conducted a survey in July 2019. Nearly 80% supported a prohibition of the sale of cats and dogs that didn't originate from a shelter or rescue group. Back in 2013, a mom-and-pop pet store in Universal City, Polly's Pets, decided to switch from selling locally-bred puppies to selling rescue dogs from Animal Care Services. "We thought that, long-term, it was going to be better for us," said Randy, Randy Housley, the shop's owner. "With even the question of its puppies coming from puppy mills gone, the partnership produced a healthier business model for the store," he said. "Plus, it's going to be better for the puppies." "Since then, the shop has found homes for close to 1,000 puppies from ACS." "Lefgren sees the proposed ordinance changes as aligning our values with best practices. What we are trying to avoid is the mass reproduction of inhumane care," Lefgren said. There is a website link listed that will be posted with the public comment, and it says, "We are asking you agendize a similar regulation ASAP, respectfully, Billy Howard, founding organizer, Puppy Mill Free Reno Sparks, Washington."
Yeah. Any other public comment, Madam Clerk?
I am showing none at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, let's move on to approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Who do you approve?
Second.
Second, our, moved by Councilman Dare, seconded by Councilwoman Vanderwell. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both? Motion carries unanimously. Item 6, the minutes. Consideration possible of both, possible approval of the minutes of the Spark City Council meeting for September 28, 2020. Looking for motion?
Move to approve, Abbott.
Motion by Samantha Abbott and seconded by Councilman Anderson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. On due 7.1, Boards of Commissions vacancy announcement, Sparks Planning Commission, Mr. Krutz.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of the City Council. For the record, Neil Krutz, your city manager, I have two announcements to make today, 7.1 and 7.2. 7.1 is for a vacancy on the Sparks Planning Commission to fill a partial term that runs through December 31 of 2023. In order to apply for this, you need to be a Sparks resident and a registered voter. Applications will be accepted through this Friday at 5 o'clock, that'd be Friday, October 16. 7.2 is a vacancy on the Technical Review Committee of the Washoe County Home Consortium for a partial term running through June 30 of 2021. In order to qualify for this one, you need to be a Sparks resident, but you are not required to be technically proficient in the, in the work that the review committee does. Applications for that position will be accepted through 5:00 PM on October 28, 2020. To apply for either one of these, you should complete a Sparks Community Service application, available most easily through the city's website at www.cityofsparks.us/getinvolved. Once there, click on volunteering for a Sparks Board Commission or Committee, fill it out, and hit submit. Thank you, Mayor Lawson.
Okay, moving on to proclamation, 7.3, and this is a proclamation for Walk to School Day. And I'll go ahead and read this one. Whereas parents driving children to school can account for up to 25% of the morning rush hour traffic in the vicinity of schools, and whereas walking and bicycling to school reduces the number of vehicle trips in the vicinity of schools and potential conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians or bicycles. And whereas reducing the number of vehicles driving students to school results in increased safety, reduced traffic condition, improved air quality, and less fuel consumption in the vicinity of schools. And whereas the benefits related to the physical activity at an early age play a leading role in reducing rates of heart disease, diabetes, and other obesity-related health problems among children. And whereas children walking and bicycling to school, together with their parents and caregivers, gives opportunities to mentor children about pedestrian and bicycle safety and its benefits related to the health and the environment. And whereas walking and bicycling to school offers the opportunity to build physical activity in both parents' and children's daily activity routines. And whereas children, parents, and community leaders around Nevada are joining together to on Walk, International Walk to School Day on Wednesday, October 14, 2020. Now, therefore, I, Ed Lawson, Mayor of the City of Sparks, do proclaim Wednesday, October 14, 2020 as International Walk to School Day in Sparks, and encouraging citizens of Sparks to walk and bicycle with their children to school while celebrating the benefits of increased safety and health this day and throughout the year. There we go. Okay? And normally, we'd say, is there anyone here to accept that? Today? No. All right, and 7.4, the presentation, presentation update on the cumulative fiscal impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. And I see Mr. Krung eagerly awaiting to impart his number on us.
Absolutely. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. How are you today? My name is Jeff Krung, your Chief Financial Officer, for the record, and I wanted to share my screen here with you real quick. Let me get the right one here. Bear with me just a second here. Okay, can you see that? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Great. So this is, as a reminder, this is my monthly update to you, just on how we're progressing through this financial and, and fiscal and, and, um, wait, where am I here? Yeah, COVID pandemic, here we are. Make sure I'm on the right page. Anyway, so.
It's over here in our right ear.
Right. Which year is it, right? Oh, my goodness. Now, today, I'm going to keep my comments to you brief, because quite honestly, September, which is mostly what our numbers are reflecting here, was, was sort of a quiet month, it's sort of a transitional month, if you will. But, but I think it's important to keep in front of you what our cumulative numbers are, and I certainly want to do that as we go forward as well. So, so I want to talk about a little bit about where we're, where we're at, how it's impacting us, and then kind of give you a brief look forward as, as to what I'm seeing according to the current data. So, right now, this first slide is just a snapshot, you've seen this before. And it's just showing that what our expenses and revenue, our expenses incurred to date and our revenue lost to date. So, you know, in total, we've certainly incurred, you know, a lot more expenses, and I'm going to get, get into the breakdown on that in the next screen. And then the revenue lost to date is about $2 million, but you'll notice, I'm still looking at that we're tracking on our revenue losses, that that's gonna, that number should double a little bit before we get to, you know, to the end of the fiscal year. So, all told, right now, we're, we've, we've counted about $12.1 million as a total financial impact to date. And that, that will certainly grow as we, as we continue forward. So, starting out with expenses, the, the greater portion on this, and this might look real familiar to you, that's why I'm not gonna, you know, have a lot of comments to you specifically on this today, because these numbers haven't changed a lot. Because frankly, our, our regional expenses are really just starting to ramp up in, in September, and this is what these numbers represent, is, is costs that we've incurred through September. So if you recall, a lot of things a bit were, were either approved in, you know, late August or going into September. So, so as it stands, we've got our citywide expenses, and this picture isn't going to change too much. It's by and far, really, the payroll expenses that we've been incurring. We've got several, you know, other categories that are included, and I'm summarizing these as far as PPE and sanitation, teleworking, and social distancing, and compliance. You know, those are, those are, those are broad categories, there's a lot of line items that go into there. But, but by and large, the largest dollars that we're, that we're experiencing is not only our, our payroll expenses from our substantially dedicated workforce, but that also includes anything that's mandated for us to pay, such as leave pay, FMLA leave pay, you know, and the like. So, as we look to the right of your screen there, when we're looking at the regional expenses, again, you're not going to see a lot of, a lot of differences there. But that's going to expand significantly in this next month or so, as, as the programs really start rolling out. So I know you've had some updates on, on, on some of these, especially as it pertains to the, to the housing, what Reno Housing Authority has been doing. And again, those expenses, we're expecting to double. I think it's, we owe them the second 50% of that, assuming that they're using it by the end of this month. So, you know, we're, we're going to know here pretty, pretty quick in the next couple of weeks how we're faring on that. So, but right now, as it stands, this is what we've reported to the state. So in total, total expenses are just under $10.2 million, which is a little bit more than half of what we've, what our full allocation is for the CARES Act. So, again, these are all CARES eligible expenses, and we fully expect, you know, that $19.2 million will be spent. You know, we're about 100% confident that that's going to happen. It's just a matter of timing, but I, I do think you're going to see an uptick in activity here very quickly. Let's do, Broadway, here we go. So, back to revenues a little bit, though, I wanted to give you a breakdown. Again, this should look familiar. I, I think, just as a side note, I like to, to keep presenting data in same format on each month, just to, for, just for comparability purposes, you know, keeping, keep it fresh in front of you. And, and so you're kind of seeing the same thing, and we can kind of track as we're either progressing or, or digressing. But in this case, as, as it comes to revenues, most of these revenues that you're seeing, we have data through July. Some of it is still through June, but most of this through July, as it comes in, in different, as the structure is paid to us. Sometimes we get things monthly, a lot of these that come in actually on a quarterly basis. C-Tax, of course, is, is the largest number, you know, that we're facing as far as losses and either to-date or to-be-projected. But certainly, it's been a lot better than it was. You know, this, this number, both losses to-date and then our projection, has been, has been dropping every month I'm coming in front of you, and, and there's good reason for that. And, and actually, in fact, I will buzz to my next slide here, because I wanted to continue that conversation as far as C-Tax goes. So just to refamiliarize yourself with this chart, what you're looking at here is, is just kind of a timeline, if you will, of our, of our behavior and our expected behavior of the C-Taxes. So the solid blue line, just to refamiliarize yourself with this, what we're looking at, the solid blue line are our actual receipts that we received going back to July 2018 until the pandemic hit, until we started shutting things down. There, I kind of, I kind of divert a little bit between a, a blue line, a little blue dotted line, and a, and a red line. The blue line is what we filed our budget on, so that's what we expected our budget to, to happen. You know, that's what we expected C-Tax to happen for our budget. And you'll see, and I'm going to use my cursi here a little bit, I hope you can see this a little bit. Certainly, in March and April, when those actual results, and that, that's what the solid red lines represent, you know, when those actual results came in, they were certainly much lower than what we had anticipated when we filed our budget. We knew that, right? The surprise came in once we started coming right back, starting in May, and then certainly in June and July, it's been consistent. It came right back, so we saw what's called a V-shaped recovery. What you'll see, though, is, is a significant event happened in July in that the, the $600 monthly benefit from the federal, the federal benefit for unemployment, that was a $600 per week, I should say, that ended in July. So I'm kind of anticipating, everything I'm seeing is, is we should expect in the fall period, starting in August, September, October, that kind of thing, should start to soften. And, and, you know, I'm not expecting it to be a dramatic downward turn, and it might not be a downward turn at all. If there's any indication from our business licenses, our business licenses have been doing quite well. So, you know, I don't know, it, it's just, it's one of those, you know, chalk it up to 2020, there's a lot of things that you can say, I just don't know. You know, it's hard to, hard to project. But as things are tracking, it looks like we might get into a softening period as we enter into the fall months. So, you know, again, if that plays out and comes, comes to fruition, we, we should, we should see the, the forecasted, you know, loss that I showed back here on this, on this previous slide of about $3 million. But, you know, by and large, I'll, I'll take that, if I, if you told me that was going to be our total losses last March, I would take that in a heartbeat. So, you know, certainly, this has been a really good news turnaround for us. Seeing that, that initial dip, you know, coming into March and then immediately coming right back was, was very unexpected. You know, to the point where we actually saw taxable sales, you know, higher than what it was in the previous year. That, that was just, you know, it, it was unheard of when we were sitting in March and April. So, so that, that's the good news. But again, I really want to see what happens going into the, into the fall months, as we start getting into August and September, as school gets in, and, you know, we're starting to see the cases spike again a little bit before I, you know, kind of declare all is clear, you know? If, 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 just to kind of show you on these, on this chart, if these numbers aren't so far apart, and if they're actually closer to each other, if that red comes back up to the blue, we'll be in very good shape. So, again, you know, we're going to see how this goes, and that's why I think it's important to come in front of you every month. So I, I hope you find these informational, I, I know I enjoy, you know, talking about it, I could talk all day long. The last thing I wanted to share with you is what I just gave you last month, I'm not going to go over it this month, it's exactly the same. But again, just for your reference, if you wanted to go back and review, this is just a very high-level look at how we ended the general fund in fiscal 20. So, that, that concludes my, my prepared remarks, but certainly, I'll be ready to answer any questions that might be on your mind.
Okay, questions from the council? I can't see anyone, so you have to speak up.
This is Christopher. I just want to say, that's amazing news. I don't have a lot of questions, but thank you, and I really appreciate the continued conversation, because it helps us make decisions and just continue to press forward. So, great job, and yay, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Mr. Krung, as I understand your presentation, your, our business licenses, the revenues from those are, are very surprising.
Yes, in, in recent months, so they, they certainly took a hit in, you know, early on, in, in the March, April, you know, May, and even into June months. But when we, when we turned that corner into the, into the new fiscal year, and we started seeing receipts in July, they were still a little bit soft, but they really started picking up in later July, August, and certainly in September. So that's encouraging to me. So, you know, as far as just the overall general economic activity that we're seeing locally, you know, in, in Sparks.
You know, locally in Sparks, I think that one of our most recent examples here, that was led by our mayor, was your executive department of city governments worked to save the business license of, for instance, Peterbilt. And Peterbilt conducted a, an event here that arguably could have risked its business license. But thanks to the leadership of the mayor, I think our businesses can rest assured that this particular mayor, and unfortunately, we didn't have time for city council involvement, is very committed to protecting the businesses and the business licenses here of our, of our Sparks's business. And I think that goes a long way of lending credibility and confidence to these businesses to the city, knowing that they will be protected by their government. And I think that that is an extrinsic demonstration of the support that they have from their elected officials here in the City of Sparks.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Any other comments?
You know, and, and actually, that, that quickly, if I can jump in again, that, thank you for that reminder, Mr. Adams, because I failed to, one thing that I did want to remind you of, as far as the business side, is that one of the items on our, on our CARES Act stimulus that we were, that we were trying to pump into the community was about a $900,000 portion of that, of that, of that CARES Act dollars that we got, $900,000, that was earmarked towards business assistance. And, and we are hoping to get that contract in front of you by the next council meeting. So, we're, we're, we're that close to finalizing our agreement, and we found a partner to help us in that. And I think that's going to help a long way to, again, along the way with what Mr. Adams was saying, to help the businesses locally in Sparks that kind of took it on the chin. So anyway, coming attractions.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I got an email right before the meeting, and T. Trend, who's doing our rental mitigation, and she, she's doing a bang-up job and has spent all but $3,000 of her allocation in the first half. So she's, she's making a huge difference for our renters and our people of Sparks. So she's she's making a huge difference for our renters and our people of Sparks, so we're real proud of that. All right, any other questions before we move on? Okay, thank you. Let's go move on to consent items. Yeah, anyone wishing to take a consent item out of order? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
I'm going to approve a consent item they went one take one to.
Got a uh motion by Councilman Abbott.
Second by by, second by Bybee.
Second by Councilwoman Bybee. Any further discussion? All right, see none. Let's, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Move down here. Consideration, uh nine point one, consideration possible approval of a payment of annual membership dues to the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And I'm sorry, I didn't look, is that you, Neil? I didn't look.
Yes, sir.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon, again, Mayor Lawson, members of the council, for the record, Neil Kretsch, your city manager, uh here to present uh an opportunity for you to consider uh an annual contribution to EDON. Uh you'll recall that, I believe it was two meetings ago, we had Mr. Kazmierski on the agenda to give an update on uh on what's going on at EDON and and their results. And then uh scheduled this uh this consideration for, you know, two meetings later so that you had time to uh reflect upon the presentation that you were offered. Uh you know, by way of background, uh we have been contributing a hundred thousand dollars to EDON for the last several years, I think since uh twenty sixteen. So that's what we budgeted this year. That's the the amount that you have to uh to consider, to play with today, if you will. Um and and with that, I will, I will turn it over to the mayor and council to have a discussion about what uh what level of uh of of membership or sponsorship, however you care to phrase it, uh you want to offer forward to EDON this year. I do want to point out, as my last comment, that we have Ray McElroy from EDON is here and able to answer questions, uh should you, should you have any? And with that, I will turn it back to you.
Okay, so um because Charlene sits on the, Councilwoman Bybee sits on the EDON board, I'm gonna go ahead and start with you, Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I have served on the EDON board for the past four years, I think, four or five, uh as the representative from the city of Sparks. So every month, I see what they do. I see um the businesses, the entrepreneurial um s- the seed funds, the economic um difference that they've made in our region. And I think a true testament to what EDON has brought to Northern Nevada, along with the Governor's Office of Economic Development, can be seen right today in the impacts of COVID on our state. Because we have, our stability is based on a broader economic base of different industries, different businesses. Um we are, we have not been decimated by COVID like Southern Nevada is, who is so heavily and heavily invested and dependent on tourism and gaming and things that haven't been happening. So I I mean, if you just look at the numbers from Clark County versus Washoe uh and the northern part of the state, a lot of that is due, uh I feel very strongly to EDON and to Go Ed and what we have been able to do in the north. So uh the, our participation on EDON is vital to know what is happening in the region, the networking and ability for me to connect with the variety of different business leaders, new companies, new startups, uh that whole entrepreneurial culture and uh and how that has grown. And the time that I've been there has been pretty exciting, pretty exciting to watch. Um I think we we can't always, the cumulative effect of what EDON does for the city of Sparks can't be measured just in the number of jobs and the number of companies who are actually in the city of Sparks because the ripple effect of the jobs that have come here, the higher wages that have come here to the city of Sparks is we we see that in people living in Sparks, people shopping in Sparks, people, whether they bring their business to Sparks itself, we we still benefit economically absolutely uh from the ripple effect of everything, the strength of our economy, which affects Sparks as well as Reno and Washoe County. Uh so I'm I'm highly supportive of EDON. The hundred thousand dollars um is big. Uh we give the same amount as the city Reno, which, given our budget, the percentage, the percentage we give relative to our budget is a huge investment. I think the investment has been very worthwhile. I think uh I was concerned because of our financial status with COVID. Uh I really thought, do we need to relook at our investment in EDON this year because of the COVID impacts? Um I think we've already budgeted the hundred thousand. I think with the CARES Act funding that has helped us and with our numbers economically, at least right now, we're in a better financial position. I don't know moving forward, but that would be a discussion for next year's budget, if we need to relook at maybe that investment being slightly lower. Because that is big, a hundred thousand dollars is a big chunk for the city of Sparks. Um but right now, I support, I support the hundred thousand for this fiscal year. Staff is, you know, has recommended it, and I've seen the direct benefits. But I do think uh I would like to look into our next fiscal budget because we don't know where we'll be for our next fiscal year, and uh I think it's worth relooking at and reevaluating, not that EDON doesn't. Um it it's more where I, or where our financial situation will be in our next budget cycle that I'm, I have some concerns. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anyone else? Want to weigh in on this? Councilman Dare?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that, Mayor. Um so I I agree with Charlene that uh sometimes it's one of those things that I I sit back and look, and there's times we've all been, I don't know if the word frustrated, but we sit back going, you know, we we want to make sure that this is actually coming right into Sparks, and that's a, that's a real conversation that we've had. Uh and and that's with Mr. Kazmierski and EDON, and I think they've done a few things to try to help make sure that they're moving that direction. I want to continue to help us move that direction, though, and make sure that it's very clear that our support does want to make sure it's placed right here in the city of Sparks. I do think that at large, the ramifications of what we've done and what they've done is showing in a good way. I mean, it really does show that we are moving forward quickly. I'm always concerned about, for us as a city, how we work. We don't uh like to just kind of pull pull back out of something that we've been in for so long and bring confusion. So I like the idea of re-assessing it maybe next year. If we are going to drop it at all this year, I would hope that we don't do it very much. And I know that we're, we're tight as well, and we need to be wise with the finances that we've been entrusted with. But I do think it's a worthy investment. Couple of things I'd like to say out loud is I I I do think that there's, there is an importance of continued focus on our existing businesses. And that's something, especially with COVID happening, especially with us needing to step back up and out and really recreate with the new years, we want to make sure we're getting as much help as we can with that. And I know they have some programs, a lot of them seem to focus on some of the larger corporate. I would encourage them to probably be involved a little more in some of the local ones as well, knowing that's important to us as Sparks. And then I'd also uh like to say, and I I heard this, and I didn't know if it was true, just just making sure that we we actually have a vote and a say in what happens during EDON. We're large investors, and I think we should be treated so. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
I, yeah, I just wanted to say that um I I think this is a conversation that we need to continue with as far as where we're going to go, as far as the amount that we support them. But as of right now, I I agree that we need to hold it to a hundred thousand. Um they have brought numerous jobs to this community. They've helped bring a diverse work um businesses and workforce. And they they do some great things for the community to help out with everything from the education of the workforce to to the employers, and i- it's a great organization. They have a great track record. And um yeah, they've brought hundreds of jobs to our city. So I I say we support it, but yes, down the road, we we need to readdress where we are in in relation to the remainder of of uh Washoe County.
Okay, uh Councilman Abbott and then Councilwoman Vanderwell.
I was just, I was gonna express my support that, it's neat that we have this conversation almost every year. I just uh as a reminder of all the good that they, that EDON's doing, and then also the message that, you know, we we want to see what what, you know, what's coming to Sparks. And obviously, I don't think we can put our, I don't think there's an actual way to measure that. You know, we have new businesses coming here that our current businesses have been maybe really able to convert them as customers. And you know, it, I don't know if we'll ever be able to figure out how EDON directly affects Sparks and separate between Sparks and Reno. But I do think they're doing a good job of the whole region. And I think there's benefits for our Sparks businesses um about bringing new ones as well as supporting our old ones, what's uh, you know, what's going on. So and I do support having this conversation, again, like we do every year, um again, in budget season and uh see where we're at.
Okay, Councilwoman Vanderwell?
Thank you. Um I want to say that um because I was not here last budget time and everything else, that I would entertain that when we get into our next budget um cycle, especially not knowing what it's going to look like after we get out of COVID, that um I do agree with all of my other council uh people on going ahead and keeping everything. Um I do, though, want to echo Councilman Dare's comments about we need to focus on the small businesses to make sure that they continue to uh be profitable and grow as um city of Sparks has a lot of great small businesses. And um I'd really like to see if there's a possibility that there is something that EDON EDON can do uh to continue to help support those small businesses.
Okay. And just for a little historical perspective, I was uh, I served on the EDON board when I was first elected, when we were giving them thirty-three thousand dollars a year. And obviously, uh in twenty-ten, eleven, twelve, you know, that was, that was a lot more money than it is today even. Uh they've done a good job. I I was first to kind of get them over the hump. We went to eighty thousand, then to a hundred thousand. But I support a hundred percent that we go back in the next budget. We reevaluate what's uh happening for a hundred thousand, you know? Can we uh spend that money someplace else or or not? I mean, still be a member of EDON, but spend some more of the money someplace else to get a little bit more bang for our buck. But uh I I think, you know, they've done an awesome job, and we are definitely reaping the the fruits of of their labor and in the fact of our diversified economy. So with that, uh
Mr. Mayor, I had, Mr. Mayor, I had one more comment, if I may.
Go right ahead.
Okay, um I I would like like to add, uh as we move into our next budget cycle uh with those discussions, I think um it's important to consider uh what the other um municipalities are contributing uh because we are at the same level that Reno is, but substantially higher than Washoe County. And so I think that's a discussion to be had on the three entities and what are um as we look at what our possible contributions will be. And then I don't know if Ray McElroy wants to add uh any further information for the council on the small business side or has any further information she would like us to hear before uh you entertain a motion? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, I can't see Ray, so.
Uh I don't hear, I don't know if you can hear me or not. Can you hear me well?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, uh Councilwoman Bybee. Um with the addressing the small business, I know you're familiar with Nancy McCormick, our senior vice president for Business Retention and Expansion and Workforce. And she would definitely be the person that we would want to circle back to on this and give you a little bit more information on some of the programs and the way that they're assisting with workforce needs, which you know is the the highest rising um need at this moment, make sure we have a vibrant workforce, get people back to work, make sure they're well-trained for the jobs that we have now. And making sure that if you have those questions, that I connect the two of you together. Um we do focus, I know that we have our workforce development um director working on quite a few different um teams within the community for that education and for the training. And that definitely benefits those small businesses.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the above payment of the city's membership dues with EDON in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Second from Councilman Dare, motion by Councilwoman Bybee. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Uh all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on, nine point two, consideration discussion of possible direction to the city staff regarding whether to continue pursuing a pending legal action against IPC DeAndrea LLC, case number CV seventeen dash zero one zero six six, regarding nuisance conditions at the former DeAndrea Golf Course. And I believe this is John Martini.
Actually, I think it's uh Jim Rundle's gonna present for us today.
Or the the doppelganger of John Martini, Jim Rundle.
There you go. Go, one week it's Thornley, the next week it's Martini. I guess that's pretty good company to be in, Mr. Mayor. Uh Jim Rundle, planning manager here to present on this item. Uh today, Mr. Mayor, staff is requesting the city council dismiss the lawsuit against IPC DeAndrea. For years, the city staff worked to rectify nuisance violations in the in the DeAndrea Golf Course area. And if you'll allow me, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to share my screen.
Please do.
Did it share?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Uh what you have in front of you right now is a vicinity map of the DeAndrea Plan Development. Uh that's highlighted in blue, which is east of Vista Boulevard. In the area highlighted in green is the area of the former golf course. The violations that the city staff were working on regarding the nuisance nuisances in DeAndrea Golf Course was the former clubhouse at the golf course had burned and had not been uh had not been maintained. Unknown chemicals were being stored at the maintenance yard, and there were uncontrolled weeds that had been deemed to be a fire hazard. Unfortunately, standard methods of gaining compliance were unsuccessful, and in twenty-seventeen, the Sparks City Council directed the city manager and the city attorney to file injunctive and declaratory relief against IPC DeAndrea to abate the nuisances at the DeAndrea Golf Course. More recently, DeAndrea Phoenix Acquisition LLC has corrected the violations that I just uh spoke about. The clubhouse has been razed and secured. The chemicals have been removed from the maintenance facility. And in fact, it actually looks like the maintenance facility is being utilized. And lastly, the weeds that were identified as potential fire hazards have been removed and remedied to the point where some of the golf holes are even growing grass on them again. I believe this is stemming from the council's recent agreement on effluent back in, I believe it was in May. On September seventeenth, just last month, staff conducted a site inspection and found the original violations exacerbating the respective city lawsuit had been rectified, as I discussed. With that, staff believes there is no reason to maintain the lawsuit against IPC DeAndrea. And this agenda item provides the council the opportunity to dismiss to dismiss that lawsuit. If the council does choose to dismiss that lawsuit, it does not preclude the city from future legal action against any violations that may occur on the property. Again, staff is recommending that the city council dismiss the lawsuit lawsuit versus IPC DeAndrea. And Mr. Mayor, city council, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, questions from the council? All right, well.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Miss Vanderwell?
I need to make a disclosure. I work for Hout Properties Nevada as a real estate agent.
So is that going to preclude you from voting on this item?
No, it will not.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Anderson, you had a question?
Actually, uh no question, um just want to make a comment and then uh make a motion if that works for you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So I I just want to compliment the uh DeAndrea Phoenix Acquisition Group. Um they've been doing a a great job out there. All of you that have driven up in there have noticed how it's screened up. Um I think they're they're making headway and working with the community as a whole out there. And uh it's it's just nice to see um that it it's transforming and and becoming a beautiful place and
And the fact that they've addressed all of the nuisance complaints that we had against them. And with that, I would like to make a motion.
Right ahead.
I move to direct the city manager, city attorney to move to dismiss the pending legal action against IPC DeAndrea LLC in the case number CV17-01066.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Anderson. I'm looking for a second.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Ms. Vanderwell's second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, guys. It's nice to see when something good happens. We, we often don't get to deal with the good stuff. So, this is, this is good for us, I think. That's as we move forward. All right, item nine point three, consideration discussion of possible approval of the construction contract AC5702 for the 2021 Permanent Patch Project, bid number 20-21-003. And I'm not going to read the rest of it. It's with West Coast Paving in the amount of $485,400. And I'm going to assume that this is going to be Amber?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Amber, go right ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. For the record, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. I'm here to present to you this construction contract for FY21 Permanent Patch Project. This is an annual project that comes to you guys every year. And what it does is it provides the city with a contractor to do the permanent patching on our streets and alleys that are cut through our encroachment and excavation permit holders. While the city does have the option of putting the patching responsibility back on the permitee, we have found that it's more beneficial to the city to do it through our own contracts, such as this one. It really allows us to have more control of the timing when those patches are replaced. As well as it gives us a contractor who really understands our requirements and the needs of our infrastructure. Now, this contract is significantly higher than those you may have seen in recent years. Through the lessons we've learned in the past couple of years and current conversations with utility agencies and communication companies, they have indicated a higher need for these type of permits. And so, we've added additional quantity to the contract to be ready to fit those needs. Now, this project is funded solely through the encroachment and excavation permit fees. It's completely self-funded and all costs are recovered through those fees. The project was advertised in August. We received two qualifying bidders with West Coast being the low at the $485,400 mark, as mentioned. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the council? Seeing none. I'm looking for a motion. Oh, Mr. Dare?
I, I just had a question and then I can make a motion too. So, when, when did, when did they actually start working with winter coming up and all those kind of things? Is this something they're going to get, is this more like for the spring hit or is this something they're going to start right away?
So, the contract would be available year round. And we really depend that on Mother Nature and asphalt materials available. So, if we find a good patch and we can get some work done, then we get it done. If not, we wait until, again, Mother Nature and materials are available.
Got you. I, I think it's fantastic we're keeping our roads up and all, so I would definitely like to make a motion. I move to approve the 2021 Permanent Patch Project Contract AC5702 to West Coast Paving Incorporated in the amount of $485,400.
We have a motion by Councilman Dare, looking for a second.
Oh, second, Ms. Abbott.
Second by Councilman Abbott. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
All right, item 10, public and hearing action items. We have none. Item 11, planning and zoning, public hearings and action items. We have none. Item 12, comments from the public, 12.1. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from the public?
If anybody would like to participate in public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or indicate your desire to speak by raising your hand on your Zoom app. And we'll give them just a moment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm showing none. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to 12.2, comments from the mayor, city council and city manager. Mr. Crutcher, do you have anything?
Oh, sir, I do not.
Okay, city council, anybody in the city council? Comments?
Mr. Mayor?
You're not technically on the city council, but we'll let you comment.
Thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the, to the rest of the city council. I would like to take this opportunity today, though, to formally introduce to the Sparks City Council and our community our new chief assistant Sparks City Attorney, Mr. Wes Duncan. Mr. Duncan will be the number two man in the city attorney's office. And when interviewing Mr. Duncan for this particular position, he came up with several wonderful ideas for outreach programs. And what really sealed the deal is when he told me that he wants to help make Sparks the best city, not only in Washoe County, but in the entire state of Nevada. And Mr. Duncan brings with him a wealth of experience, a ton of energy. I'm sure many of you have already met him informally before. But I do believe that not only the city council, all of our clients here in the city of Sparks, but all citizens will benefit by Mr. Duncan's association with our, with our law firm here.
Hey, we've, I think most of us have met Mr. Duncan, so it's going to be a pleasure to work with him. Thank you. All right, no other comments or questions? Mr. Abbott, do you have a comment?
Yeah, and just real quick, you know, a, a normal activity or event for us during October would be in Pumpkin Palooza, for many people to come down. And I just want to give a shout out that we've taken Pumpkin Palooza and made a, a virtual thing of it. So, if you're interested, you can go check out their website, but it's pumpkinpalooza.org. And it's just a great little program where you can get, you know, socially distanced around, you're kind of treasure hunting around Reno and Sparks. And so, it's a cool little program that you get dressed up, take photos. It's a, a good way to enjoy the Halloween times that we have right now. So, I just wanted to say that, that we are still doing special events just a different way right now.
Hey, any other comments from this council? All right, seeing none. Then we'll move on to 13, and without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.